They weren't bats.
We get a reputation over here.
Oh, we had to head next down before I asked.
Steve, you ready?
I am.
You ready?
Signing sheet's already been, there's another sign in for the sheet.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 28th, can you believe it's the end of another month already, of the City Council regular meeting. I'd ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds, justice for all.
We'll do the roll call of council. Councilmember Snow?
Yes, sir. Here.
Wilms?
Yes.
Burke? Fowler?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Wozniak?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We'll go to citizen input. Please be advised that those who have signed up, you'll have three minutes. And we're pretty tight on the three minutes so that everybody gets a fair shot. And so I'll be calling the names in the order in which you listed your names on the signup sheet. So we'll start, please, with Christian Henny.
Good evening.
Evening.
First off, I want to say thank you guys for the work you do for the city. I know it's not an easy job, and I know that there's a lot of thought that goes into budgetary issues, delegating our tax monies, and getting all that situated. With that being said, I also want to say I appreciate the work that the Arts Council does. They do a fantastic job making sure Bella Vista remains one of the best places to live, one of the best places to visit, and there's a reason people want to come. With all that being said, myself and some other people, I'm going to say personally, are against the issue, the resolution for the bronze statue for the Public Safety Building. I'm sure we can all agree that we need to support our law enforcement, our firefighters, paramedics, all our public safety, but this is not the way to do it. There's better ways to spend $90,000, and I understand that that is top end, can be lower than that, but to me, it's not the way to do it. I know it was spoken at the work session that it will set a tone of respect and for some even reflection, and that you're going to know where this, this is where order begins. I'm kind of picking a couple parts here, so I don't bore you guys with what you've already said, and that it will make a statement to our police officers that their environment in other places doesn't exist here. I'm sure we can all appreciate that, that we do support our law enforcement here, but there's other ways to do that than putting up a statue that is made for just visual purposes of a man and an adult. It's a police officer and an officer canine, but there's, there's better ways to do it. I spoke to Councilmember Burke and a few others. We could have something about the height of where the mayor's sitting, have some memorial bricks, $100 a brick, you could express your support that way, get your name put on it, and then that wall, hire a local Bella Vista artist, paint a mural, maybe of our fallen officers. You can make a larger wall and have it dedicated to Bella Vista fallen officers, the officer that was killed in Pea Ridge, all of our local officers, and have that rather than a statue. They don't have to be exclusive. You can have other pieces of art at premises, but I believe that there's better ways to express our gratitude and support to our public servants than putting up this statue. And I feel that you as council have an obligation to spend our tax dollars wisely. I know there's some opposition on the council, some in favor of this, but I agree with the council members who say this is far too much money for an installation like that. So appreciate your time. I know you guys can't respond right now, but I won't take up anymore, so that's it.
Thank you, Christian. Linda Lloyd, please.
Good evening. My name is Linda Lloyd. I live at 102 Fairway Drive, and I'm also speaking about the sculpture. One of the things that makes the difference between a good building and a great building is its approach and the artwork. Imagine going into Crystal Bridges if that great spider were not there. It makes a huge difference. The city of Bella Vista owns precious little real estate, and having a great statement piece in front of that building gives a big statement as to what we want the quality of life to be like in Bella Vista. Given the fact that this council has already voted to put that money into this year's budget, and the fact that the feds are giving us over $5 million, I feel this is a good time to make that expenditure and just show people what we're all about here in Bella Vista. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Good evening. My name's Terry Wilson. I live at 52 Churchill. I have been proudly a resident of Bella Vista for 18 years. I'm passionate about three things: my wife, this community, and the city of Bella Vista, and the arts. And since I've been here, I've been involved with Village Players, on the board of Live On Stage. We created the Ambassador Program. We've just been involved with so many things as a volunteer, and Mr. Christie has certainly appointed me to the board of the Bella Vista Arts Council, which I appreciate very, very much. And along with all that, for the last 10 years, I've been a docent and have trained to do tours on all the art, and the sculptures, and the architecture, and the Franklin Wright House at Bella Vista. So I'm around art all the time, and one of the greatest attributes to what I've done in the last few years was to help bring Marilyn to Bella Vista. And I met the wonderful Mr. Larry Poe, who is, by the way, has one lung now, and has COPD and in the hospital with COVID, but he is the person who I worked with to get him to donate Marilyn to the city of Bella Vista. And we did so at a value of $40,000, and that was a gift to this city. And I think I worked with Wayne, and I think that's, the insurance value on that's $75,000. So it's an asset, and I'll tell you, as the years go by, as you cannot buy another piece of art from Mr. Poe because he doesn't make anymore, and his pieces go for six figures beyond, this will continue to go up in value, and it is an asset. It's an asset to the city, this one happens to be free, but it's an asset, and I'm, I'm proud of it. And I know a lot about art, from a $30,000 piece to the most expensive piece at Crystal Bridges, $60 million, but art goes up in value. It doesn't diminish. And this bronze piece of art that we're talking about is going to be an asset, not just a piece of art. As you throw a check to acquire this piece of art, it's going to be an asset to Bella Vista. And the day it goes up on a pedestal in any way that it's formed, it will start going up in value and continue to go up. It's what art does. And it's an amazing thing that we'll have a piece of art that we're not only proud of, but it's worth something. You don't lose it because you bought it. It goes up in value. And I think this piece of art, the way it's described to me, doesn't have just a monetary value, it has moral value. It has a moral value to every police officer, fired person that comes into Bella Vista to see. So I look at cities around our northwest Arkansas that have jumped on the bandwagon since Crystal Bridges happened to Bentonville, but if you look at Rogers and Springdale and all the programs that their city councils and mayors have done to broaden the arts in their communities.
Terry, I'm afraid your time's up.
Okay. I challenge you to make this a reality, please, and I thank all of you for doing what you're doing.
Thank you. Ms. Teter?
I'm going to pass on mine.
Okay. Susan Blackwell?
Thank you for having this meeting, and thank you for all that you do. I feel like a newbie to Bella Vista. I moved here a few years ago when pandemic set in, so we're all coming out. And I am so thrilled with this sculpture. The reason I am is I have studied extensively art history. Roman, Greek sculptures are still around. You spend $90,000, and I know it's not going to be that much, but $90,000 on a sculpture that's going to last for generations, hundreds of years, and it's an immediate visual story. We read a lot, we hear a lot, but when we see a story, we see a policeman, we see a bronze dog, the canines are amazing, and they, I know of them, I just think it's incredible. It causes people to slow down, to reflect. It gives a chance for children to have conversations with adults about something really important. It enriches our life. I could go on and on, as you know, but I won't. I just want you to know that this is, how many things can you invest in? Buildings deteriorate, roads deteriorate, but a sculpture like this, it will, if it gets to the point where it's deteriorating, it will go into a museum. It's that valuable. So vote for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. Ellen Quickbaum?
Ellen Quickbaum, 50, Churchill Drive, here in Bella Vista. I'm here this time to talk about art, and I am in support of art here in Bella Vista and the Arts Council, which I understand you all put in place to support the arts here. And they've done all their hard work to recognize the local artists. I've been to a couple of those events, which are really fun to see the local artists and their work in our area. And I have a vision for art in Bella Vista. The Artist Retreat in Old Bella Vista with shops and eateries, a coffee house, music, the art studio or an art studio, the Return of the Winery, maybe, decorated at Christmas with shops and an Old Town Experience, that was kind of my vision. And the Bella Vista Arts Festival, growing and expanding to other parts of the city, maybe, and not just in one place. Art installations around in the city, like at the library and other city properties. And now I'm concerned. I'm concerned that the retreat's sold, it's gone. It's owned by somebody else, and I understand it's going to be all bike-related. And it's been sold, and now I read the festival is no more. And so I'm concerned that now we have this opportunity to put art in front of a brand-new building, which it was built, I'm sure, with a lot of money, to support our police officers. And now I hear that there's a question about why we wouldn't want to put that piece of art in front of that building. It's an officer and a canine. It's not like it's something real abstract, or, well, some people like abstract, I get to. So the sculpture's an officer, and so that will go along with Marilyn and the Fireflies, and let's do some more of that. So why, and I realized that the city doesn't provide any money for this committee, and so why is the city not investing more into the arts and providing that support for this council? Art is for all ages. Mountain biking is not, believe me, but an art trail that combines walking, biking, driving, shopping, and art is for everybody. And so please vote yes to support art in Bella Vista. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there is no one else who has signed up, so we'll move now to council reply. Who's first?
Well, I think we're going to talk about the statue here in just a little while, so I'll save comments for that, but I do, I would take a moment here to say, our Arts Council has done a phenomenal job. They really have. They celebrate Bella Vista artists in a way that I think makes them feel really special, highlights them, introduced me to many of our local artists that are really exceptional. And I had opportunity on this particular matter to have some extended conversation with the president of the Arts Council, Denmark Tyzer, and I found her to be completely passionate about the arts, obviously. We couldn't have a better person leading that council. Past presidents recognized as well. It's phenomenal, and it's probably even disproportionate in a sense to the size of Bella Vista to have that kind of commitment on the behalf of volunteers to work on the arts for our community. So thank you guys very much for what you do.
All right. Mr. Flynn?
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for their comments, and since this subject commander's going to come up in a few minutes, I'll save my other comments for them, but I really appreciate people taking the time to give us their feelings.
Yeah, just real quickly, because I'll save my comments specifically for the bronze statue, you know, in a few moments, because it's not going to be long before we get to that part of the agenda. I really appreciate the letter that you sent to the city council members today. It was really informative. I'd like to see our newspaper guy over here take that article and publish it in some type of form or format for the Weekly Vista, because I don't know that our residents are really fully informed. The activity that you guys have put in play in a very short amount of time is very impressive. And I know, you know, the artists that live here locally certainly appreciate everything you do for them as well. I was really kind of a little bit taken back. I know you were very active, but I didn't know just exactly how active, and also the fact that, you know, some of your board members, you're spending money out of your own pocket, you know, to make some of these activities happen. So that is really true commitment. And lastly, I'd just like to say too, I mean, my wife and I, we're a huge supporter of the arts. We're fortunate that we do get to travel a lot, various places, and, you know, around the United States and also outside the country. But pretty much everywhere we go, I mean, art is very prevalent, you know, in a lot of these cities, you know, more progressive cities, and you see a lot of bronze statue art in these cities that are placed around in various places, and it's fun to watch people interacting with them, you know, and they really truly do. So anyway, so I'm going to leave, you know, my comments about the activity of Arts Council, and then I'll speak specifically to the statue when the time comes, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody on my left? Okay, thank you. My thanks as well to all of you who spoke on this subject this evening. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes, excuse me, of the January 24th regular meeting. Are there any errors or omissions?
Will be approved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Fowler.
Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Carried 6-0.
Thank you. Moving on to reports. The first is the monthly financial report for the December of 2021. I met today with Finance Director Hill. She is still closing the books. We don't have all the revenue in, and she's still reconciling the bank, which should be finished this week. So we will have the financials for you by the end of March, which is normal. It's the end of the quarter, and then we'll wait for the auditors to swoop in in April, and we'll begin another cycle. But we still continue to be in good shape. I'm going to read the state of the city in a few minutes, and I mentioned some of the highlights of our financial situation. Okay. Every year by law, every mayor in every city in this great state has to read and present a state of the city. It's required by statute 14-58-302, and if you'll indulge me, I'll start. In my annual report last year, I described 2020 as different, distinct, and challenging. Needless to say, 2021, while somewhat better, was also demanding in so many ways, not the least of which was the continued pandemic. In January, we met the pandemic head-on, as our community paramedics and our communications team partnered with Northwest Health to begin vaccine clinics. We were the first municipality in northwest Arkansas to do so. As well as numerous clinics at Reardon Hall and St. Bernard's Church, we worked with the Northwest Arkansas Council, participating in all of their large drive-through vaccination events. We also offered at-home vaccination service, which was very popular. As of the end of 2021, we estimate that close to 70% of eligible Bella Vista residents received both shots and where appropriate, a booster shot. We recognize that vaccination is a personal decision. However, we continue to urge everyone to become vaccinated, not for their own health, but for the health and well-being of their family and friends. Although 2021 was clearly a tumultuous year, the city remains in excellent financial shape. The following information is preliminary and has not been audited, and as I mentioned, we're still closing the year. Our fund balance at the end of 2020 exceeded the minimum requirements of 25% of the revenue for the year 2021. We expect the fund balance to exceed requirements of the 2022 budget of revenue as well. At the moment, it looks to be around $6 million. Last year, I highlighted seven activities that were on the horizon. Excuse me, all were completed except one. We continue our search for land for our fire training facility, which is part of the bond approved by our constituents in March of 2020, and indeed, purchase of that land is on the agenda this evening. Allow me to highlight some of the 2020 accomplishments and brag a bit about each of the departments. The ever-popular farmer's market reopened in 2021 in a new location right here at Village Center on Lancashire Boulevard. As the name suggests, this location, believe it or not, is the geographic center of Bella Vista. The market was well-attended each Sunday between April and the end of October. Community Development Services under Mr. Tapp processed a stunning 581 new residential housing permits, 39% more than 2020. They also oversaw the building of the Blowing Springs to Metfield 3.1, Blowing Springs Greenway, which has become a very popular venue for cyclists, runners, and walkers. CDS, in partnership with the Walton Family Foundation, gave away 400 trees and bushes to Bella Vista residents. Other CDS 2020 highlights include a new septic tank ordinance for new homes, thank you, Linda, as well as introducing an impact fee on new residences and commercial buildings to help defer the rising infrastructure costs as we continue to grow. The CDS and Streets Department worked diligently to successfully reopen Sunset Drive. I'm happy to report that the city did not incur any expenses associated with the reinforcement of the cliff and the construction of the road. Rather, we had minimal costs for engineering consultation. Last year, I mentioned that we doubled the road resurfacing budget for 2021, so last year, the department oversaw the resurfacing of 59 miles of streets, a 91% increase from the year before, and the greatest number of miles for at least the last 10 years. The approved 2022 budget includes the same amount, 2.4 million, for street resurfaces. The department received 1,284 citizen requests in 2021, a 43% increase from the year before. 87% of 1,123 of these requests were responded to within two days. Of all departments, the Street Department received the greatest number of compliments from our residents in 2021. Our Police Department continued to move forward in the middle of the pandemic. On July 28, they hosted a groundbreaking for the new Public Safety Building on Forest Hills Boulevard, the largest project funded by our bond. The project is on schedule to be completed in December of 2022. The police hosted events in 2021 that had been canceled in 2020, namely Coffee with a Cop, National Night Out, Citizens Police Academy, and the SALT Senior Safety Academy. The department also introduced a new motorcycle division, which has already proved invaluable for traffic patrols and special events. We are extremely proud of Officer John Heron, who has been recognized by the Attorney General as the Benton County 2021 Officer of the Year for his capture of two suspects involved in the murder of Officer Kevin Apple with the Pea Ridge Police Department, and indeed, the Attorney General is going to give his award to him tomorrow over in Saline County, and the chief and I will be there in attendance. Excuse me, our Fire Department also had a successful year. As mentioned earlier, they were the first department in northwest Arkansas to introduce very successful and well-received vaccine clinics. As a result, they were requested by the Governor's Office to assist in the drafting of a playbook for mass vaccine distribution events within the state and other states such as Pennsylvania. Our EMS team was the first municipal provider, offering COVID rapid and PCR antigen testing. Our community paramedic team partnered with Northwest Health to provide acute home healthcare through telehealth. Our new fire station number three was built through bond funding and opened for business in January of this year. This is a six-person station, complete with a full complement of equipment and vehicles, including eventually an ambulance. Finally, in 2021, the department saw a 15% increase from the previous year in ambulance runs, excuse me, with just over 4,000 calls of service. Early in 2021, our library team transitioned from a COVID-restricted facility to a fully operational library, and they haven't looked back. The library staff opened the new expansion area to the public, which includes a children's area, study and reading rooms, as well as meeting rooms, which can be booked for public events. They streamlined many patron processes, such as new computer reservations and checkout systems. In November, the library, in conjunction with the City Arts Council, opened a new permanent public art exhibit entitled Fireflies, created by local artist Tom Flynn. Our court and legal team responded to the COVID-19 challenge by conducting quarterly arraignments by Zoom and introduced new check-in and checkout changes to ensure the safety of all participants. In 2021, they filed 2,138 cases, with more than 2,700 cases pending, some of which are old, disposed, and pending cases transferred from our files in Bentonville prior to the establishment of our own Bella Vista courthouse in 2018. The court has been converted to a new filing system as they prepare for their move to the Public Safety Building in December. In the first half of the year, the legal team was focused on the issue of procuring fire protection water for the new Public Safety Building. A settlement was reached as prior litigation authorized by city council. Eminent domain lawsuits were filed against two property owners to obtain necessary property for the completion of the Mercy Way Bridge Trail and Street Improvement Project, and the team successfully worked to transition the Board of Adjustment Duties to the Planning Commission. They worked on many ordinances related to enacting a new septic sizing ordinance and made changes to the city burning ordinance. The lack of space at the county jail continues to be a major concern, not only for Bella Vista, but for all agencies within the county. Our human resources team negotiated a 2022 employee benefits plan with no increase in premiums. They, like many of our colleagues in other cities in Northwest Arkansas, retained a professional organization to conduct a salary study in 2021. Staying on top of salaries and benefits is a key element in our recruit and retain strategy. The team was able to identify a number of mid-year increases in 2021 with no negative impact to the bottom line. In addition, the 2022 approved budget includes adjustments to many key positions within the city. We hired thirty-eight individuals in 2021 to fill open positions such as the Finance Director, Trails Manager, Chief Building Official, and an Assistant Street Superintendent. The team continued to be busy in 2021, tracking COVID exposures, quarantines, and positive cases. Since the first case of known exposure in 2020, there have been one hundred and twenty-one reported exposures with fifty-four positive cases within our employee base. Capital hours have been spent ensuring that all employees have the information and equipment to navigate through this situation. Our Communications Director played a prominent role in assisting the Fire Department plan and deploy all vaccine clinics, as well as the first mass clinic at J.B. Hunt. The work of this team garnered a great deal of statewide exposure for the Bella Vista Fire Department. In September of 21, the much-awaited Bella Vista bypass was opened by RDOT. Our communications team worked closely with their state and county counterparts in the planning and execution of this very important celebration. The team worked with the police to disseminate information to the public and media about cases of importance. The Communications Director revamped the trail event permitting process to make it easier for both event organizers and city staff to permit and conduct events. We celebrated the return of trail events in 2021 with both mountain biking and trail running events held on the Back Forty and Little Sugar Trail Systems. A large day-to-day component that is virtually important to the successful operation of our municipality is information technology. Our IT team designed telephone internet services and cybersecurity protocols for the new fire station number three in the Public Safety Building. They also assisted the library team with some of their improvements, namely digital signage, new self-checkout options, and a new intercom system. No matter how much new software and hardware is deployed in the constant vigil to stay ahead of hackers, the main safety thrust in any environment is ensuring that all employees understand that they are key to preventing an outside party from entering our IT systems. In 2021, the IT team added a new email security program, complete with monthly educational online pointers to prevent spam and to reduce phishing attacks. Through the use of CARES Act funding, the IT team successfully deployed over $200,000 in new equipment and procured twenty-five new laptops that were deployed to employees who had to work at home during the pandemic. The year 2022 promises to be very exciting, full of infrastructure improvements. The opening of Fire Station Number Three in January and the Public Safety Building in December, obtaining land for the fire training facility. RDOT replacement of the Tanier Creek Bridge on Highway three forty of Lancashire Boulevard could be completed in the spring of 2022, and the replacement of Little Sugar Bridge, also on Highway three forty, has a completion date of early summer 2023. Reforging the former Fire Station Number Three into a Streets Department substation in the building of a sand salt storage facility on the site, continuing with our aggressive road surfacing program. And finally, we're going to pay off the last of our short-term debt for new firefighting vehicles and associated equipment this year. One of the financial challenges we face in 2022 is the reduction of our share of the county sales and use tax from eleven point nine eight percent to ten point five nine percent. This percentage is based on census data. While Bella Vista grew by thirteen and a half percent from the previous census to twenty twenty, sorry, the previous census in 2020 to a total of thirty thousand one hundred and four, other municipalities grew at a much faster rate. As a result, we were not able to include all requests in the 2022 budget. We need a second ladder truck, which will cost about one point five million, and I'm pleased to tell you that that truck is now in order, and we will get it next year. In addition, the police and fire departments were asking for three new employees each. We will begin to examine the new ladder truck in the first quarter, as I mentioned, and the headcount increases after the second quarter at the end of June. At this point, it looks promising. The Streets Department needs a proper wash day for their vehicles. Currently, they have a special permit from the State Environment Agency to wash their vehicles outside and collect samples of the runoff for inspection by the state lab. There will be a time in the not-too-distant future when state will no longer renew the permit. The funding of this project, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, is included in our 2023 capital plan. However, if the state moves, then we will need to move forward. As always, on behalf of all members of City Council, I extend our thanks to the many volunteers in the community who tirelessly helped with the library, animal shelter, trail maintenance, the recycling center, the museum, our churches, our community groups, service clubs, advisory council, all of whom are vital to the success of our wonderful community. I also extend a huge thank you to our employees and their supportive families. We have a great team for a great city. This is my eighth state of the city and my last one. Next year, it'll be the next mayor. But I reflect back, and I think over these past seven-plus years, at all the changes that all of us have worked on, and I mean all of us, all the councils, thank you, all of the residents, a big thank you, and all of our employees. We have a very, very bright future ahead of us, and I've been so proud to be mayor and continue to do so with all of my fervor until the end of the year. Thank you. I entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda.
In fact, when we did the minutes, I think we had a motion and second, and we never voted.
Wayne, did we vote on?
We voted.
We voted.
Yeah, we voted. It was six to zero.
Everybody voted.
Okay. So a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolution on the agenda by Title One?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Were you second, Jerry?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Snow, a second.
All right, thank you. Roll call vote. Councilmember Wilms?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thank you. We have one piece of old business. It's a resolution adopting the finalized Benton County Hazard Mitigation Plan and for other purposes. This has been tabled from January, when there were a few errors, and our fire chief was asked to go back to county, who actually produced the document, and correct some of the errors which have been done. Other errors have been pointed out, which have been given to Robert McGowan, who is the Director of Benton County Public Safety. What we found out was it's not really the county who's writing this. They have a contractor who's doing this. So that slows the process even more. And the county is actually going to approve it tonight, and they'll be doing scribbler's errors. And in speaking with Mr. Kelly, moving forward, we can do the same thing. So we can pass this tonight, knowing that scribbler's errors are possible. Is there any discussion? I entertain a motion to approve.
I take the motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wozniak.
Okay. Roll call vote. Councilmember Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thank you. The first piece, Mr.?
The only comment I would have about this document is that it seems to be poorly constructed and poorly assembled by the consultant that did the work. And it's not the staff, it's not the team that worked as the committee. It's the consultant who packages all of this up, and it's a reflection of the poor quality and performance by them to doing their job.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilms. So the first piece of new business is an ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with JH Creative LLC in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars for the purchase of bronze statutory artwork for display at the City Public Safety Building, and the request is third and final. This is what was being talked about earlier during the citizen input session. The current estimate is seventy thousand, so it's under the ninety thousand. I did go back, and indeed, the hundred thousand was approved, excuse me, the capital budget, as part of Resolution 2021, and it passed six to zero. So the money has been authorized, but like anything else, especially when it's over thirty-five thousand dollars, we have to go to council, and we have to have approval to spend the money. We've heard many people talk about it this evening. Personally, I'm in favor of it, and I'll open the floor.
Do you, since we're, I know there's, you know, we need to expedite this, right?
Yes.
So if it's okay, I'd like to go ahead and see if we could suspend the rules and move to third and final, and then have the conversation about the statute.
Okay, we have a motion. By Mr. Fowler, seconded by Mr. Wilms.
Discussion?
Well, do you want to discuss now?
Yes, the motion to suspend the rules. What's the necessity to expedite?
The, okay, there's two reasons. The first is because we're dealing with an ordinance, and we're waiving competitive bidding, okay? And the reason for waiving competitive bidding is that there's no other artist that we have found who's able to produce what we're looking for. Plus, it's got a dovetail with the construction activity of Naples. And we've got to be able to dovetail it so that it's going to be mounted in place at the correct moment in time, because there's buried lighting cables and everything else that's feeding into it. That's the reason for it.
Okay, so it's to try to get in front of the finishing of the building, rather than retrofit it, perhaps?
Going back later, yeah, and having to dig up part of the stuff and everything else. Okay.
One other thing I wanted to say about this. I know you've made a point, and one of our public speakers did also, that we previously had reviewed the budget. I did go back to the agenda for our December thirteenth meeting, which is where we did approve the budget. And I went to try to find, because I didn't recall seeing it, I went to try to find, where is this in the budget? And I searched that document. In fact, I've got it open today. If you look at what's published on our city website, you won't find the word statue or art anywhere in our budget. It's not there, like a blank line item. It's the best I could figure out. There's a blank line item for a hundred thousand dollars under admin, admin, not under the Police Department.
Right.
And so if it were approved, it was approved kind of in a batch mode. And I think if I understand our process right, this is the time for us to either approve or oppose the statute in and of itself.
Yes, because we're coming now because it's over thirty-five thousand. I also looked at the budget, and I found it. If you remember, this past year, we did the budget in two different categories. We did the operations, and then we did a capital budget.
Yes, sir.
And on the back page of the capital budget, on page seven, it states sculpture, and it's been given a project number, and it says a hundred thousand dollars.
That wasn't what we approved in December thirteenth.
Yes, it is, in fact. I took this out of the minutes.
I'm looking at the website right now.
Okay, well, the website is simply what Cassie puts up, and she may have forgotten to put this up. I pulled.
Well, that's what we would have been working off of.
Okay, no, you worked off these two documents because they're also in the binder that Wayne has with all assigned resolutions. This is there.
As a matter of transparency, Mayor, we should always work off the same document that the public is looking at.
I don't disagree, but sometimes people make mistakes, and I guess Cassie's.
Perhaps so, and perhaps so. I just wanted to make a note that what we approved on December thirteenth, what's in the public record does not refer to a bronze statue.
It's in the public record. It's just not on the website. And you don't always believe everything that's on a website. I hope you don't.
I actually have a copy of that myself, the document that you're showing right now.
Yes.
I know we had it. I do. Got it at home.
We're still, okay, we're still trying to get it through to suspend the rules, okay? And we have a motion on the floor, unless anybody objects to it.
Ready for a roll call?
Sure.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote on that, suspending the rules and moving to third. Councilmember Snow?
No.
Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Passes five to one.
Okay, this is the third and final reading. It's an ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with JH Creative LLC in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars for the purchase of bronze statutory artwork for display at the City Public Safety Building. So that's the third and final. Anybody want to start the discussion?
I will.
Mr. Snow?
I stated previously that I was not in favor of this purchase of, I agree with everyone that spoke here tonight. I am a fan of the arts, would like to think that I'm somewhat of a shade tree artist. But I cannot, in good conscience, spend taxpayer money for this. I think it would have much more meaning if it was paid for through donations and through some type of fundraising. And I'll be glad to volunteer tonight to be the first contribution to that fund if somebody can get it started. But I cannot, again, in good conscience, vote for taxpayer money.
Well, thank you. Anybody else?
No one else, go, I'll go.
Yep, Mr. Wilms?
All right, so at the risk of being remiss here, because during the work session, we had this conversation, and each one of us kind of had our piece, if you will. But those aren't typically well-attended, don't really get reported in the Weekly Vista. I'm not sure what was put out on Facebook or anything like that, because I don't really pay a lot of attention to that. So whenever this was, you know, first before us, and, you know, I know we all agree as City Councilmembers, we're really not allowed to interact with each other on decisions about whether to pass or not to pass an ordinance because of FOIA, et cetera. So we actually, you know, make a lot of these decisions, you know, kind of like in a vacuum. You know, I sat at home, and when this was brought before me, and I had to kind of think through, you know, how I thought about it or whatever, it was completely on my own. And I just kind of went through the steps. I'm not going to be as eloquent as the speakers from the Art Council tonight. I thought about it more specific to the building. However, as I did state, I am a supporter of art, and I enjoy it, you know, whenever we see it, whenever we're traveling around. So just thought about it like this, in my context. Is there a time when we could be too pragmatic or too practical? No one lived on a tighter budget than our family when we were raising our children and so on and so forth, and we were moving from city to city to help build a career. We only occasionally bought something that we absolutely didn't need. When we did, it would be something that we would treasure, something we would take pride in, something that would make us feel good and say that we're really glad that we did this. In this case, I believe that that will be the feeling once everything is said and done with the placement of this bronze statue of a police officer and his canine companion at the Public Safety Complex. No one will have regrets, and it certainly will make a statement. As for the completion of the complex, this bronze statue will be the icing on the cake, the cherry on top, the shining star. I can clearly see the building with and without the statue. It will, in my view, make a measurable difference. It will, in my view, make a measurable difference. When people, the citizens, enter and leave this structure, this statue, I believe will set a tone. A tone of respect. I'm going to repeat what one of our speakers said a little bit earlier tonight. I'm glad to see someone was paying attention at the work session. So I'm going to repeat this. I think it will set a tone of respect for some reflection and for some simply a reminder of where they are. You will know that this is where order begins, and it isn't just our police officers at this building house, but our district court as well. So whenever people, whoever, if they're coming to city court, they're going to know, you know, like I said, that they're in the presence of law and order. Also, in this environment that exists today, at least in other places, where the people that are in charge of keeping the peace are discounted and disparaged, we as a community will be making a statement of, that's not going to happen here. We hold our peacekeepers in high regard, and we appreciate the significance of having them here and recognize the inherent risk that comes with fulfilling their duties. In the permanence of this symbol, of this statue, we will support our police and judicial system now, and we will support them always because this is permanent. I fully support the placement of this bronze statue and would like to thank the Arts Council for the generation of the idea and the research in locating a sculpture of such prominence. Uh, and it wasn't mentioned here tonight, but this sculpture actually has art displayed at this Smithsonian Institution. We can afford this, and it will have no impact on the current financial situation of our city or even in the near to long term, in my point of view. I actually view it as an investment, and I actually came up with that on my own, by the way. I was glad to hear someone else say that. So, uh, that's my statement, and that's where I stand.
Mayor Henry? Mr. Burke? And Mr. Fowler, Mr. Wozniak?
Contrary to popular opinion, I hardly ever agree with Doug. But I'm glad I do. You know, and I'm sitting here as a 39-year public safety retired already. There's no way, even though I have a problem with the cost, there's no way I can vote against this because I know what it'll mean to the people in the building, the people who walk into the building, and what it'll proceed to do in a few years for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else? Mr. Williams?
I'll be brief. I just had a few points. Uh, you know, we did approve this in the budget for, uh, $100,000. And I actually have the hard copy here. And it's on page two, actually. Well, first, it's on the front page, that admin is 100 grand, then on page two. The only thing on page two is $100,000. It says sculpture, says the word sculpture. And I noticed the online version didn't have the word sculpture. But it did, this was handed out to us in writing, and we discussed a number of these capital projects that night. Second thing is, uh, Demra Taitzer, uh, was kind enough to talk before the council in January. And, uh, a lot of council members, uh, gave Rosie speeches after she spoke. And, uh, I think, uh, some people are getting whiplash by this council when they act one way in December, one way in January, and then all of a sudden in February they want to do something completely different. So I consider it erratic voting, frankly. Second thing is, art aesthetics are very important, and, uh, I don't think you can underrate them. You know, people act like, oh, it's just some kind of extra thing you do, and maybe you really should never spend money on it. Art aesthetics have a big, big effect on people's lives and their attitudes, and it's very important. Third thing is, uh, you know, I was at the Artist of the Month the other week, and it was Susan Blackwood, and her husband was there, Howard Friedland. They're both, uh, national artists with a national and even an international practice. And they came from Montana, and they could have moved anywhere. And, you know, we've had the Artist of the Month, and, uh, had a lot of different artists who live in Bella Vista. And the fact is, what's happening is Bella Vista, as you all know, has beautiful nature, which artists like. And Bella Vista is close to, uh, Crystal Bridges, which artists like. Even though Crystal Bridges isn't in Bella Vista, it's in Bentonville, it's an asset for anyone who's, it's literally 10, 15-minute drive to a great, great museum. It's been a huge asset for Bella Vista. Third thing is, is Bella Vista is relatively reasonably priced compared to a lot of places in the world. So we actually are starting to become a place, uh, a nesting place, so to speak, for artists. And I could see, uh, there's a lot of good artists in Bella Vista. I think it's a surprising number, and I think we're in a position where we could have many, many more and be a real asset for our community. And the last thing is, this is really, in a way, honoring the police. And we've got, as the mayor pointed out, we have a reserve of about $6 million. The federal government has given us 5.9 million, which is a total windfall. So we can definitely afford $90,000 or perhaps even a little bit less, apparently, to honor our police and, and make our, uh, new safety building even more impressive.
Thank you. Work to the other side, Mr. Snow?
One more time. I, I don't think anyone objects to this, uh, to this bronze, to this statue. Because everyone is so, as it says, so eloquently stated, it is, um, it, it can be an asset, it is an asset to the city. But, uh, every budget, whether it be your personal household budget, your business budget, or in the case of the city, you have a list of needs and you have a list of wants. And I don't know, I just, I have a hard time believing that Bella Vista has surpassed the point of, of, uh, of wants, uh, or needs, surpassed the point of needs that we can just go to the point of wants. And again, um, this is taxpayer money that we are spending for this. And, uh, again, I still think it would have more meaning and be more, um, beneficial to the people that see it if it were paid for through, uh, private funds. Fortunately, or unfortunately, we don't have the, the luxury of, of having the, um, unlimited cash flow that, uh, the city of, um, Bentonville has for Crystal Bridges or for, um, the private funds that go into Crystal Bridges. We don't, we don't have that. That's not available to us. And again, it's not a thing of objecting to the bronze or to the art itself because, um, everyone appreciates, and most everyone appreciates art. But it is the fact that we are spending taxpayer money as something that we want as opposed to something that we need, and when I still think the city has so many needs that are going, um, untaken care of.
Okay, Mr. Williams, before I go back to the other side, do you have anything?
Um, I, I just, uh, I have a couple of things to say. At the work session, my position was that I felt it was a little, a little frosting on the cake, that maybe we should have approached in a more conservative manner, namely with a joint venture with the public, uh, where we would take, uh, gifts and donations, and the city would provide succeed money. I don't know what amount that might have been, uh, in terms of looking at it, but that was the concept that I was viewing and expressing at the work session. I think the public, uh, input tonight was, was very, um, I think, moving in the sense of looking at the city of Bella Vista in the long haul. I appreciate, having been involved in a lot of public buildings over my career, I appreciate, uh, the art and statutes and other types of features that supplement and complement a public building when well, well chosen and well presented. Unfortunately, if we look back a couple of years, uh, we had some things in the United States that went on where a number of our important and well-known statutes across the country were being torn down for various reasons. Local sentiment, uh, expressions at the time. I don't know if that's continuing, but it certainly puts a sour taste in your mouth for putting something up for the public to enjoy and then seeing it torn down 25, 50, 75, 100 years later because there's a different, uh, movement or thought at foot. I think in the bottom line, the council, in their wisdom, did approve this in the budget, knowingly or unknowingly. And, uh, I would say that it is, it was a part of the building committee's plan that the chief has been working with, um, the architecture and the contractors and the engineers. And I would say that it would seem to me that if we've approved it in the budget once, we need to approve it in the budget now.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Burke, interrupt.
Thank you. Well, I gather that I'm not going to change any minds on members of the city council. I, I really do respect the comments of, of everybody tonight, especially our, our city council members. You know, I have been accused before of perhaps being too pragmatic. And so if, uh, if that may be the case with me. My family tells me that quite a bit. Dad, come on. And in fact, I come from a family of artists. And if you were to see my house, you'd see all of my walls are filled with artwork, much of it from family members, uh, but some of it that we've purchased and, and been proud of. So, uh, for everybody, I, I say, where you come from with regard to your passion for this statue, you come from a good place. I don't question that whatsoever. It passes the good test. There's no doubt about that. But the, the Arts Council has their role to play, and the City Council has our role to play. And I do really, uh, take my role as a steward of taxpayer money very seriously. And for me, I hear the mayor speak, even in the state of the city, that there were needs that the city has that are not being met. We need more law enforcement officers. We need more firefighters. Those needs are not being met. We're having conversations right now about can we afford to pay the employees of the city a compensation that will attract and retain the best for the city of Bella Vista? And the pragmatic side of me wants to say, we have to work that side of the equation better. So I, without any animosity, without any malice towards those who have supported the statue, I do want to say, I feel like my role is to spend that money, not as though it's my money, because it's not, and to spend taxpayers' money with the same rigor and, and, and pragmatic approach that the taxpayers would expect of us. And for that reason, I do oppose spending up to $90,000 for a single art installation, especially when I know, and, and Demra and I have talked about this, especially when I know that's not the end for the spend in this new facility. And, and I understand the Art Council's intent is to celebrate Bella Vista artists more so within the facility. And I, and I think that's where the Art Council has always put their emphasis, and that's, that's probably the most, one of the most important things to them is how do we celebrate Bella Vista artists? And this, to me, came secondary. Yes, I see it as a splurge, as somebody said, a cherry on top of a sundae. I'm willing to eat my sundae without a cherry on top. Okay? And therefore, I oppose spending taxpayer money to fully fund a single art installation of a bronze statue.
Okay, thank you. I think everybody's had their chance at this. So an entertaining motion to approve? So moved by Mr. Wozniak. The chief is yours?
Yes.
And seconded by Mr. Fowler.
All right. Roll call vote. Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
No.
Snow?
No.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Carried, four to two.
Thank you. All right, we'll move along to the next resolution, which is authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a contract with Burke Employment Staffing in an amount not to exceed $41,395 to provide personnel for seasonal right-of-way mowing for 2022. All of you have been around long enough to know that we do this every year. We go to a public bid, and as usual, we only ever have one company that bids, and it's always the same company. So, um, are there any questions or thoughts? Seeing on an entertaining motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Fowler?
Seconding.
Mr. Phil, uh, Mr. Williams is second.
All right. Roll call vote again. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Carried, six to zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Riggs Cab of Lowell pursuant to a Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative, formerly NJPA, purchasing agreement for the purchase of a rubber tire wheel loader in the amount of $220,000 for use by the street department. In normal lingo, this is a front-end loader, and it's in the budget. If you remember, I, I addressed a few minutes ago that the plan is to take former fire station number three and convert it into a satellite station for the streets building and to build a sand and salt storage area behind it so that in the middle of storms, they don't have to go all the way back to the central area where they would lose time. They can fill up on the west side and keep going. And that will be located there. Now, you need a piece of equipment to be able to load the sand and salt into the trucks. So the plan is to take an older one from the main streets building, move it to the satellite, and take this new one and put it into the new one, into the, excuse me, the new existing building. So that's Mike's plan.
Um, additionally, I believe, too, there are sleeping quarters there so we can station a couple personnel there if we know an impending storm is coming, so they don't have to travel in.
You're absolutely right. Chief, thank you for also leaving all the cupery and the plates and everything in the fridge so that the fellows have a full-fledged apartment, if you like. But you're absolutely right. There are sleeping accommodations there as well.
Move that be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Snow.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Fowler.
Mayor?
This way.
After this is voted on, I got a special request that I draw your attention to.
Is it on the agenda?
Yes.
Can it? Okay.
Can we wait until we get there?
Uh, but it can't, it needs to, if, uh, can move it up, it would be, um...
Okay, so it would, it, I think he's moving to suspend the rules to modify the agenda, which would not be in order at this point because you've got a pending motion and a second.
He's simply going to ask a question, the mayor is all.
Okay, well, I, I think, Mayor, you can handle that as you want. One, after this vote, I think, if you just want to take a question.
Okay.
Probably do that.
So what's the question here?
Idaho G.
Okay, well, let's wait till we get to Idaho G then, okay? So let's take the vote now on, on Mike's loader.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carried, six to zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a fifth agreement to the limited terminable license agreement Trail System License with Bella Vista Property Owners Association, Inc., for the purposes of adding parcels for expansion of the public trail system. Doug, this is the Rellington Trail, which will be the family, friendly trail on the east side.
Yes, sir. It's, it's actually several different pieces around town. Manchester, the family lived at Reardon, the tunnel at Reardon, the Bingley Trail on the back 40, and the Huntley Gravity Park.
Okay, well, certainly we need that tunnel underneath Reardon. It's very, very dangerous down there. Are there any, um, thoughts on this?
Question?
Yes, sir.
It says that we're entering into the agreement with the POA. POA just recently did a survey that said that, uh, like 75% of the respondents did not want to see any additional trails, and like 54% of the respondents did not want to see any additional, uh, walking trails. But yet, we're, we're entering into an agreement with the POA.
But yet we're entering into an agreement with the POA. It's kind of confusing.
Because the POA has already approved these trails.
So there's...
So we're responsible for the trails because the way that it's designed is we're using POA property, okay? But they can't sell it. Well, they could, but it's very, very complicated. So they give it to us on a lease.
It's a license.
Excuse me, a license. And as a result, they determine the trails and where they're going to be built, and they work with trailblazers that then comes to us for our approval. So yes, I too have seen that survey. But the POA Board of Directors had already approved this before that survey. And I believe, Doug, they're already building on the Rellington Trail?
Yes, sir.
Just for Emily, our trails manager, she took us through the details of this. And actually, what the total trail mileage added is less than four miles, I think. They're mostly connectors. And so it's nominal, really.
Anyone else?
Well, it is in keeping with our adopted 2040 plan that says we need to build five miles of trails every year.
Sure.
So it's consistent with our master plan that we've adopted.
Two years ago, yeah. Anybody else?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm not familiar with the POA's survey, but the residents of the city and people voting in the POA are not necessarily the same group.
That's true.
We're responsible to the residents of the city.
That's true. Our goal, that's something to point out, especially for those of you at home. The city boundaries do not align with the POA boundaries. They're quite different. POA boundaries actually extend into the county and over to Gravita as well. Anyone else? Mr. Snow?
I'm here.
Yeah.
A blessing. Well, the POA has many voting members who are in Minnesota or Texas or Wisconsin. They're all over the place, really, other places in the country.
That's true.
I'm sorry, whenever this came up in our work session previously, I was not aware of the POA survey, was not aware of that survey. But if 75% of the respondents, and I'm not sure what the number was. I understand it was, I don't know, it was more than 1,000. I don't know how many exactly. But if 75% of the respondents, even those 75% are also voters and taxpayers in this city. I just find it concerning that we are approving more trails when apparently our citizens don't want more trails. Personally, personally, I wish that I was in a position to take advantage of the trails. I like the trails, but again, it appears as if a certain percentage of the population does not.
Now, remember, there's 30,104 of us here.
I'd like to make a motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wazniak.
All right, roll call vote. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Wazniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carried 6-0.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution F. Approving the mayor's reappointment of J.B. Portillo to the Bella Vista Planning Commission for a four-year term expiring March the 1st, 2026, position five. Ms. Portillo has finished her first term. And in speaking with the chairman of the planning commission, he's certainly willing to work with her again. And she has also asked to be reappointed.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wazniak.
All right, roll call vote again. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wazniak?
Yes.
Carried 6-0.
Thank you. Jerry, your question.
I was just going to ask that Mr. Sedbury and his wife are here tonight. They have a young daughter that is training to be an Olympic swimmer. And it sounds like she's probably maybe getting a little fussy. So I was just going to ask that maybe we might move that up so that they could get that daughter home.
Did she just go up for a quick dip, is what that?
Yeah.
She cheered for the statue, so...
Clayton, welcome to the planning commission. I'm sure all will be well and it's going to get approved in a second. Are you with Springdale and their planning department?
Previously, I'm still with the city of Springdale in the IT department.
Okay, so you know my namesake down there, Patsy?
Oh, yes.
And funny enough, her husband's name is Peter.
Yeah, we were just talking about that.
All right, thanks, Jerry. Motion to approve.
Second.
I better read it first, I think. It's a resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Clayton Sedbury to the Bella Vista Planning Commission for a four-year term expiring March the 1st, 2026, position four. I have a motion by Mr. Wazniak?
Yes.
And seconded by Mr. Wills.
Okay, roll call vote again. Councilmember Wazniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Impressive resume, by the way, yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carried 6-0.
Next resolution approving the mayor's reappointment of Demer Tietzer to the Bella Vista Arts Council for a three-year term. Discussion?
Yep, just taking, again, outstanding performance. We appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Mr. Fowler?
All right. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wazniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carried 6-0.
Thanks. The next resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Cooper Communities, Inc. in the amount of $112,125 plus closing costs for the purchase of land near US 71 and the Missouri State Line for usage as a fire department training facility. This is the last piece of the puzzle in the bond. Any discussion at all?
It's not necessarily discussion, it's a clarification. Chief Sims, we, you know, had a conversation about this. I mean, this actually is a resolution for the purchase, right? It's just that we have 90 days to check the property out and make sure that it fulfills all the requirements that we need to build a fire training station, right? Or will we have to approve the purchase price when we make that final decision later?
This authorizes entering into the real estate contract, which would then, it's going to be, the council's only shot at this. So the price is determined, and it's got to meet the conditions and after due diligence and all that, and that would permit the mayor to close on the property. So there would not be further council consideration after time.
Gotcha.
If you approve.
Any further discussion? Seeing on an entertaining motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Flynn and Chief, is that, no, Mr. Wills?
All right. Councilmember Wazniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Carried 6-0.
Thank you. Number J. It's a resolution amending the 2022 city budget to appropriate $9,800 from otherwise undesignedated and unappropriated reserves to the Bella Vista Public Library account number 60-53600 for the purchase of HVAC air sanitizers. You may remember, we talked about this at the special work session, perhaps using money from the American Rescue Plan. And because the amount is so low, we determined that we were able to take this out of the, out of the reserves.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Fowler?
Question.
Yes, sir.
The librarian was here at the work session. She said that she had obtained a better price of like $8,600.
She had, she did say she had another quote for the same identically.
Is it the same, is it the same product? Is it the same?
She said it was the same product except it was a lot of dollars.
This is, this is a budget amendment. So normally, an item of that value would not require council approval. So if she's going to spend less, she certainly can spend less. But the budget amount she'd be authorizing will be $9,800. But that doesn't mean that's what's going to be spent.
Okay.
But you can reduce it or amend it. It's, the council, the council controls the budget.
Okay. Right now, I have a motion for Mr. Fowler.
Second.
Mr. Flynn.
I would say, just as a comment, I would say let's go ahead and approve it as it is. And she had found another source, and she will save us that money if she can, I'm quite sure.
Oh, she will.
Okay, roll call vote again. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wazniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carried 6-0.
Thank you. And the last resolution of the evening is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into the third amended trail maintenance agreement with Bella Vista Property Owners Association, Inc. Doug, is this bringing these same parcels into the maintenance?
Mayor, this is adding trail maintenance for Little Sugar Trails.
Oh, okay, it's Little Sugar? Okay. Are there any questions at all? Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Fowler and Mr. Flynn.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Wazniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Carried 6-0.
Thank you. Meetings and announcements. The next city council work session will be Monday, March 21st, 2022, 5:30 here at the conference. The next regular meeting of the city council will be Monday, March 28th at 6:30, also here in the court. Planning Commission work session will be March 3rd this week at 4:30 at the Bella Vista Court. Planning Commission regular meeting will be March 14th at 4:30, also at the court. And Board of Construction Appeals will be March 8th, if required. That's it. Thanks for attending, folks. We are adjourned.